Excuse me, I'd like to welcome everyone to the work session of January 26, 2020 for the Board of Commissioners for the Town of Upper Marlborough. David, may I have a roll call, please? Oh, that wasn't good. If that was me, I am here.
Commissioner Janice.
Here.
Commissioner Sarah Franklin.
Here.
And Dave Williams, Town Clerk, all present.
Do you stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our first order of business is the healthcare broker firm presentation, which is a board discussion. Kyle, I will lead the introduction.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to welcome our Insurity team with Chris Wilson here, and I'll let him go ahead and kind of take over, introduce his team, give the board a quick presentation about his firm, what they do in the healthcare world, and then we can open up to ask any questions. Chris, you can take it from here. Thanks for having us.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Kyle, for the opening. I see you have a document on the screen. I don't know if you wanted me to share the portion of the proposal that we had already given you all or not, but so I'm Chris Lawson, Principal Broker and Insurance Advisor for Insurity. We submitted a proposal back to you all late part of last year, excuse me, in two-part human resources, which we have covered with the town prior to now. And the other portion is for insurance brokerage and benefits administration services. Kyle, is it okay to share my screen?
Absolutely, go for it.
Okay, see if I can make this work. I can't, it won't let me. So I'll go on memory. So we're located here in Prince George's County, specifically in Bowie, Maryland. We started here in Bowie, Maryland in 1990, started by myself actually in 1996, and have grown from then to now. As we had, you know, stated in our proposal to you all, we've worked with other municipalities and quasi-government entities here in the county and outside of the county. I can't see all of the faces on the screen here, but hopefully two other members of my team, Andrea Harrison, who is the actual broker for Town of Upper Marlborough in this effort, and Carl Williams may be on the call, who will be the benefits client manager for Town of Upper Marlborough. So we work with government agencies and entities and nonprofits, private industry, you know, an array of different companies and organizations, both small and large. Our role is to research for our clients to see what the market, you know, can provide based on your senses, your desires for benefits. We usually take a pulse as to what types of benefits you're engaged in, what types of benefits you'd like to have, whether you're utilizing them now or it's something that you're thinking about in the near future, and we do all of the research. We're currently appointed with probably, well, certainly all of the healthcare providers in the mid-Atlantic region, which are, there are five of them. We've been appointed with them since 1996, and there are a number of different ancillary and supplemental insurance providers that we work along with as well. I won't try to go down the list. So upon matching your needs and prices up with the carriers, we're able to then present to you what, you know, our findings are, and we don't make any decisions. We always do make a recommendation based on our fact-finding with you and how you're doing things. That's what we think would be some of the best avenues to take, but you ultimately make the final call. And upon doing so, whether it's insurance benefits, health insurance, life insurance, disability, and even your 401K plan or 403B, 457, you may have a 457 plan, we would be able to help you procure and administer that retirement service as well. So once the plan is in place, Carl Williams, who I mentioned a moment ago, would be the kind of the employees' go-to for, you know, special circumstances. Of course, we're going to educate and train all of the employees who are on the plan as to how to access the different information on the plan, how to use the provider websites and all, making sure that they have their self-service capabilities and knowledge in order for when they need it. But in special situations, we have assigned him to address your employee needs and direct them as need be. Andrea Harrison would be the main point of contact with either, I'm not sure who that will be, if it'll be Kyle or Mr. Williams, or Mr. Morgan, or whoever it will be, but she's kind of the, you know, your main point of contact to make sure that everything we've told you that we will do will get done. And I myself am looking over the, you know, total organization, making sure that all parties involved are, you know, handling their roles and responsibilities. We do quarterly meetings, biannual meetings. We can be flexible as to what, you know, what would be best for your circumstances and what you all, and how you all like to do things. You know, leading all the way up until renewal time each year, we usually start about 120 days out just to make sure that, you know, we're, you know, understanding everything that has taken place. You know, although we kind of run it really tight, we should know all that has taken place during a planning year. But we like to start the planning about 120 days out. Carriers usually provide renewal information and request renewal details about 90 days out, and we should usually be able to finalize your renewal about 60 days out and get everybody up and running so that the date of renewal, we're not still trying to make it happen. Everybody's got their ID cards and so on and so forth. That's usually the goal. That is our goal, but a lot of times, you know, the carriers, you know, fall short, you know, for one reason or another, but we have good reputation and such with all of our carriers, and pretty much with all of them, we have dedicated client managers who support our business with them to make sure that we get things through. And then, just to go a little bit further in terms of insurance, we also work with our clients on workers' compensation. That's not necessarily a direct employee benefit, but it is something that is of benefit to your employees. So we work with Chesapeake Insurance, as well as the Hartford and Travelers for Business Insurance, as well as Hiscox. So to the extent that you need us to support any of your business insurance needs, we would be able to do that as well. I know it says health insurance and more specifically the RFP called for that, but wanted to make sure that you knew that we could extend ourselves to those areas as well. So that's kind of, excuse me, an overview of who we are and what we're able to do. I don't know, Andrea, if you're on the call, if you'd like to add a few words?
Yes, I'm here. And as you said, I can't see everyone. I don't know whether it's the type of machine, computer that I'm using right now, but I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. I'm Andrea Harrison, very happy to be a part of the Insurity team and certainly hope that we can provide for your insurance needs. We are, we pride ourselves of being right here in the county, very accessible to you and to our clients. And Chris pretty much covered, covered pretty much everything. I don't know. I guess we'll just sit back and wait for specific questions. So thank you very much.
And I'm not sure if Carl actually made it on this call. Are you out there, Carl?
Yes, I am, Chris. Hello, everyone. My name is Carl Williams. I will be your client manager for Town of Upper Marlborough. Chris basically will know everything that I do as far as processing new hires and open enrollment paperwork. I also like to follow up with Bowie if they have any issues with any type of benefit issues. I also offer biannual lunch and learn sessions as well so that people can understand their benefits. And also Chris did go over quite a few things as well. So if you have any questions, just feel free to let us know. Thank you very much.
Okay. So with that, as my colleagues have said, if there are questions, I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
This is Sarah.
How are you doing, Sarah?
Hi. I'm wondering about the HR piece because I don't know how much you know, but I know we're reviewing our whole employee handbook, and so that's something we definitely wanted your help with and just kind of having you to consult on all the training and all that kind of element. So I'm just wondering who would be the contact for that and all that kind of thing.
Yeah, we had another meeting, was it last week? I think it was last week, with Mr. Morgan and Kyle and our HR representatives who are not on this call. And so we covered a full range of HR services, and one of the very first things that we will do is to review policies. That's always first. We want to make sure that the handbook is compliant. We know it is, but we want to make sure that all of the HR laws and process and procedures are current. As they, as you know, they change quite often, you know, for one reason or another, especially this past year with COVID. There were so many leave laws that were put in place. It was just, it got a little bit crazy, but we managed to have it under control. So we'll be able to review all of the policies and recommend best practices. We are, you know, members of SHRM. We also have our own HR legal service, not in-house, but it's an organization we've been using for quite a while, made up of, I don't know, a couple hundred lawyers. And that information is at our disposal at the very moment that a law or regulation comes into play. We're notified, you know, via email, and it's pretty much guiding us through, you know, what's coming up or what's just, you know, taking place so that we are then able to push that out to our client contacts and, you know, schedule meetings accordingly. So in terms of policies and procedures in your employee handbook, that's usually the first thing that we do when we take on a client. We can set up for you to meet with, you know, Terry and Margaret, who would be the two most that would be processing on the HR side. I'm an HR professional as well over the years, so I kind of wear a couple different hats and reading everything and read too much almost, but so I'm there as well to make sure, you know, the best practices and procedures and all are flowing as they should.
Yeah, it would be nice to have a chance to meet and talk with Terry and Margaret, you said?
Yes.
I would appreciate it.
Sure. Okay, yeah, we can set that up, you know, for whenever you want to and kind of go back through it.
Okay.
You guys are making this too easy. Mayor, any questions?
I watched your presentation to the staff, so.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Well, there are no other questions. Okay. No other questions. We, again, thank you, you know, so much for your time this evening. We're at your disposal as needed. Should you like to, you know, schedule some other discussions, feel free to, I don't know what the process is there. If you ever have any glaring concern or anything, just shoot me an email or text or call, and as I said, I'm happy to talk through it and looking forward to it.
Thank you for.
Appreciate you and your team.
Yeah, thank you very much. And we will be in touch.
Okay, you all have a good meeting.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, our next business is the annexation update, board discussion. Kyle, do you want to bring us up to date? I know we had a few emails earlier, but you can bring us all up to date.
Absolutely, Mayor. So as you can see on the proposed map of the current land, we're planning to annex in Phase Two and Three of annexation. As everyone's aware, you can see Phase One down there at the south side being the Showplace Arena. That was the first annexation that the Town of Upper Marlborough ever undertook in its 300 years. And then Phase Two and Three were broken up, but back in June, the board, the last sitting board, wanted us to combine both annexation phases into one, just to speed the process up and just move everything forward. So that's why it's labeled Phases Two and Three. For the most part, it's made up of, to the west, primarily undeveloped property, zoned residential and open space. As you can see, it's got a couple hundred acres of forest land that run along Maryland Route Four, and would also bring in about four residential houses in addition to all that forest land. Now, to the east, going out toward 301, that's primarily commercial and industrial and mixed use. And then it also brings in a railroad track, which would go toward the town's utility taxes. That's a public utility, considered a public utility, so that would be in addition to any Pepco lines and Verizon lines and other utilities that come into town that way. And then to the north, you can see I'm bringing in primarily residential properties. Only one actual residential property, and the rest is undeveloped residential property, and one Catholic school, as well as some car businesses. But that's pretty much an oversight of where we're looking to annex now. We are very close to the 25% requirement of the total property value owners signing in. We're only just over $200,000 short in that consent for property values. So it's pretty much maybe one or two residential properties signing on and then, or one commercial property. If we get either two more residential or one more commercial, it would be set for the Phase Two and Three annexation. We can pass the list of addresses over to the surveying firm. We do a boundary survey, provide that information to town attorney to draft the annexation resolution. So in that, it's a total of 23 properties, 67 commercial, 56 residential, along with some untaxed properties, including some park and planning lands, some county-owned lands, some state highway right-of-way, and some other miscellaneous untaxable land that we don't require consent for, so we haven't really reached out to them, but we will if the annexation is able to move forward. It looks like, based on that's approximately 20 to 30 new residents would be coming into the town, so not a huge strain on town resources. The main resource that would be needed would be the town police department, which, just looking by the anticipated revenue for the tax base, the property taxes, it would allow us to hire a couple additional warrant officers to help patrol, so both boost patrol hours within the existing town borders and then also the new town borders as well. Public Works, it's not a huge impact on Public Works. They just implement snow plowing on the state highway roadways that we'd be bringing in, and would only have to collect refuse from the extra five to six residential properties. But I can take any questions on the general consent area, then I can also hop into the Moose Lodge agreement after that. But I just wanted to pause, see if anyone had any questions to this point so far.
So, you know, I have this question, because I gave you heads up, but over on the east side, it's part of town and then a little bit of road and then part of town, which is very wonky and generally like, I don't think the best done way to do things. I know you said there were issues getting consent in those areas, and so it's basically, if we annex those areas, we're not going to be able to do the annexation because they're not going to consent. Is that?
Yeah, that's why those, so there, as you can see there, you have two main roadways. Chelsea Lane, there, it's to like the northeast of 202. So you have the Chelsea Lane, which has about, I think, six or seven houses on it, and then you have Crescent Drive, which also has about six or seven houses on it, and then some miscellaneous houses on 202 that we didn't get any response back from. And because of that, we also cut out the peer list to the north. We had previously included peer list on the north-hand side coming off the road, but all those properties, along with the properties along, 725 to the west were all removed because we didn't have enough residential property consent to that. So the idea is we would annex in what's currently undeveloped, and people who had consented and want to come into the town now, and then kind of backfill them in the next year. So when we revamp or look into any future annexations, or they have a chance to see what their neighbors, being in the town, have an opportunity, they see their trash picked up and stuff like that. But that was kind of the thought behind that.
So have we actually like knocked on their doors and they said no, or we just haven't heard from them?
We sent letters. We've left door hangers at, not every property, but the key strategic properties with a large amount of business in them or that we know are habited by owner-occupied. So they've gotten a couple rounds of letters, and they've gotten one set door hangers. We haven't done door knocking because of COVID. That's kind of handicapped us. But that's how the other properties have really come into consent through those letter initiatives. At the board once, we can try to send more letters or try a different initiative to get those in.
I mean, I really don't like jogging around an area like that. I don't, I know we need to do this, and I'm not trying to play over here. Do we have phone numbers, or, I mean, we could knock, or are we giving them a letter that they just would have to sign and return? Or do, you know, how much initiative do they need to take here?
So they've gotten a couple rounds of letters with a nicely designed thing talking about annexation, the benefits, how to do it. Then in that letter, they also got the annexation consent forms for both one, the property, and then another one for each of the registered voters in the household because we have had that list of people. And then with that, they had a envelope pre-addressed and pre-postage marked to return. And so far, we've gotten one no from the properties on 725 out there across near the Amish market and whatnot. That's why, but we didn't get any yeses. Why that didn't come through. But the 202 quarter was something we had hoped to bring in because we did have people who said yes, they want to come into the town. We actually had people further into that who want to come into the town as well, but it just wouldn't be smart, like you said, cut it up as much as it was. But that's, and then we've done the door hangers. They even had the door hangers actually included with everything else. It also included a slip saying, "I don't want to be annexed" to return because really the ones before didn't really have a thing saying they didn't want to be annexed. So we put that slip there because we hadn't heard anything from them. But we only got the one slip back from 725. And then the same with that peer list that we had to cut out as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the stuff over by the Amish market and that all is not as concerning to me as over on 202. So I'm just wondering if, I mean, I'd be willing to knock on doors with paperwork, kind of like the census worker saying, "Hey, do you want to do this?" Because, I mean, I think it's only like a dozen houses over there, yeah?
Yeah, 15, maybe 15 or so, yeah, you're right.
So I don't know if any of the other commissioners would be willing to just give that one last try. Just try and make that part look cohesive or be cohesive, especially.
I'm willing to, I'm willing to jump in the air with you for sure to do that, to make it happen. Whatever we got to do at this point.
Okay. So Kyle, it's like Pat, letters again, so we can bring clipboard and kind of go out there and.
Yeah. I just have to hit print again. All the forms are already saved for each property on the sphere drive, so I just have to print them, and then we can just pick a day to go out there, preferably with some marked town vehicles, so people don't think they're traveling or anything like that. But yeah, definitely, that, I mean, that's some door knocking, something we definitely wanted to do the whole time and set up for, and then obviously COVID hit. Because there's only so much to really pay attention to, what's going in the mail. You know, a couple, we did try to do certified return receipts on a couple just to make sure people are getting it, but we can, what I'll do is I'll generate a spreadsheet of all those addresses and the registered voters with them to give the commissioners idea of what we're missing there. And pick a day.
Okay, I had been thinking the weekend would be a better time to grab people, but I don't want to have staff having to work on the weekend just to do it.
At least this is an important enough initiative, and I don't think we'll need, we don't want to have too many people going around, so that's.
Yeah.
That's often a need for another staff. That's all we really need, even with like one or two commissioners. We don't want to think they're motivated, but I'll, we can move forward with that because while this is technically legal, you're right, it does look kind of weird.
It's frowned upon, too. I know that, so.
I'd like to ask a question, if I may. Tony Best did speak to the town board and staff a while back, I think before our latest commissioners came on, on certain kind of procedures and annexation, and he gave lots of examples about how Bowie has had done it. And I wanted to refresh my memory, Kyle. I don't know if you have this answer close at hand. You're able to have that little, almost separated chunk off of 202. Now, those two little corners, do they meet? Well, they don't necessarily have to, right? Because 202 allows a connection to an annexed area. I mean, you can't annex an area that's not attached to an existing boundary unless there's a major roadway. Is that correct? That acts as like a wagon wheel spoke?
So in this proposal, we would be taking 202, not that it does a whole lot other than because it's a state-owned roadway and they continue to maintain it. But in between those two chunks, there is a, I think it's called Cherry Slam or something like that, where you can go to, if you have a set of properties that does want to get annexed, you can take the roadway only up until that point and then fill in later.
Yeah, okay.
That's kind of what's going to be. This isn't the most extreme version that I've seen of. This isn't the most extreme version that I've seen of this type thing, but it, it's definitely on that where you have that very skinny part of just roadway kind of attaching the town when it's not actual properties. But you're right, that, that's what that is.
And isn't it true, like oftentimes when these kind of almost separated areas start experiencing being annexed, that the unannexed areas start to see the difference or maybe better persuaded down the line, once there's more interaction with, why did these people get their streets plowed and?
That, that's, that's it, yeah, they'll, they'll see, hopefully in July, we'll have the budget for new like recycling cans and stuff like that. So they'll see their, why did my neighbors have this, why is it getting picked up? Why are they able to put their bulk trash out on Mondays and get it picked up? But I can't, and then that's when we just send people to the town website, which does have a standing annexation consent form that people can fill out and submit. But yeah, that, that, that was kind of the hope here, but we could definitely make one last push. I'm all for that, we haven't done any outreach to those houses in particular, at least before the holidays. So maybe now would be a good time. Because over the past month or two, we've been primarily talking to the commercial properties along with 725.
Thank you.
Do it, we could probably hit, hit them in an hour and know if they're going to come in or not come in without.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
That's worth it, to me.
Not plenty of door hanging supplies and stuff like that. I think we left them a door hanger with the packet of information and some town sunglasses. I thought the sunglasses would really seal the deal, but I guess they didn't.
Well, I guess you and Janice and I can coordinate a time over email, is that good?
Absolutely, yeah, I'll send you guys a list so you see what we're working with and we can, we can pick a day. And go out there.
Kyle, let me, yeah, thank you. In terms of reaching out to them, is it appropriate to like follow up with them via phone to see if they received the information? And then if they have any questions in regards to the annexation? And then that's an opportunity to, to have a discussion with them? Do, do we do follow-ups that way?
We could, we just have to find their phone numbers. But I guess you could look on White Pages or something like that and pull them and just cold call. That's always a possibility.
Yeah. Well, definitely need to make sure we capture some of that information because it's not guaranteed. And we're able to speak to everyone or anyone when we do go out. So I know people are very concerned about opening their doors and we don't know if they're seniors or not. So I know that that's probably going to be a little challenge, so we need to probably think about that.
A lot of times too, like when I went out canvassing before the election, I would kind of leave, like leave a written note and the person would see me and I would wave and leave a note. So then they were, are going to come out and read it because someone came and left it for them, so that can help too. Even if they don't come out the door.
And the door hangers we have have all town contact information, stuff like that, says, reach out about annexation and whatnot. That's definitely something we can try. Did you want to try calling, do you want me to try and calling them first? Or did we still want to do the door initiative sooner rather than later? And then maybe follow up with whoever we didn't touch base with, calling them?
Honestly, I think, I mean, for me, I think a good phone call would work. I mean, it kind of will help weed out those individuals and it's a possibility. Maybe they just overlooked it, put it down, didn't pay attention to it. They don't really understand all the implications and how it's going to change their life from day to day. So I think maybe a good phone call, I think that always works, especially like considering the times that we are in, you know? So we won't be spinning our wheels, I think it's a good effort.
Okay, something you want to consider when we're looking at phone numbers, most people don't have a landline anymore. Most people just have cell phones. That's a little more difficult to find than a landline.
Well, let's, because I mean, that's a valid point too. I, I was just wondering if we should coordinate timing of everything over email, so we're not eating up our meeting time. What do you guys think?
Yeah, that definitely works for me.
When I pull the demographics, I'll see what phone numbers I can find and we can see if, like there's a road we don't have any phone numbers for pretty much or any good ones. But I'll, I'll start pulling in information and, and checking for phone number. For those. That'll work.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Is there any other question? The other part to annexate would be an agreement with the Upper Marlboro Moose Lodge. They own a commercially zoned property off 725, it's rather large, it's worth 1.8 million. We're at 20% of the consent amount that we need to annex the area, which is, is pretty significant. What's weird, or not weird, but what's different about this Moose property versus some other Moose properties is that all the other Moose's in Prince George's County, the Moose's Organizational Social Club, they are nonprofit entities, so they do not pay county taxes. And so we normally would not require consent of, of those types of properties. We always would reach out and let them know we're trying to annex. But even if they say yes, it doesn't, it can't count toward our total. It's more of just a symbolic gesture that they want to move into town. But this particular Moose Lodge is different in the fact that it was a commercial property and they kept the, I guess, the banquet social hall. But then they attached commercial offices to the rear they rent out to help fund their nonprofit entity. But because there's for profit there, they pay county taxes. So that's, that's what makes it weird in the fact that they, we actually need their consent to, to bring that property into the town limits or help. Could you be to the total? So one of the things the town attorney best discussed is, and one of the things they brought up was they, they were concerned with paying the additional town taxes because they are nonprofit, but they were willing to come into town, but that was the one, the one kind of hiccup in the process. So one of the things town attorney best advised was that the town has the ability to enter into agreements with properties on a case by case basis as a last resort to help to bring them into the town limits or get them used to it. As long as it does, it's not a huge drawdown on town resources, that's going to cost the town money and a loss of tax revenue on it. But here we're proposing that the board enter into an agreement with the Upper Marlboro Moose Lodge to waive their town taxes for a five-year period. To allow them to, to sign into the town limits. And I wanted to see if, if any of the board members had any, any questions about that. Or any questions on the process or the circumstances or anything like that.
I, go ahead, Sarah. Okay, I want, I'm, I'm thinking about the, the tax revenue, so just trying to figure out what would be the tax revenue that would be lost. I understand it's important to get them in and they're that 20% that we're looking at, but I also noticed that it's five years. So what, how much would they contribute to the town if they were paying taxes? How much could we expect, do you have an idea?
Ninety-eight hundred per year, so a total, the town would be forfeiting a total of $39,000 in tax revenue.
Does this area have a high demand for services? Like are there a lot of county calls for police that go out there?
I'll defer that to Chief, I'm not aware of any, and I know that will not have an impact on public works because we don't pick up their trash or recycling. Chief, do you know of any, if that, if the Moose Lodge is a large volume of calls for service for the county police?
At this time, I'm not 100% sure. So I have to get back to you all on that.
And we would need to plow over there? Or no?
No, they, it fronts the state roadway, so we would, we don't technically have to plow. Obviously, if, if state highway is busy elsewhere, we would handle it like we do Main Street now. And our town plows would only supplement. We wouldn't put salt down because that's an expense, obviously, and it's, it's a state roadway. But we would just supplement plowing, we would not plow their parking lots or anything like that, it's all private property. So with the annexation, really only, there'd be no more, at this point, there'd be no roadways that the town has to primarily maintain. It would all be us supplementing.
So were they agai, so just to clarify, just to make sure that I understand, so were they against annexation without a five-year term? Or is it just that we offer, we're offering the five years without, you know? Can you talk to me a little bit about that?
Yeah, sure, so we didn't, this is not something we offered in the first approach, they got stuff. We did some, at first, we thought they would not have to pay taxes at all. But after digging, we found out that they did in fact pay county taxes and that surprised us, but then we learned the reason why. And then their, their concern was paying of the town taxes on top of the county taxes that they already paid. And just because the fact that they're a nonprofit, it'd be a nonprofit paying, paying additional taxes. So this was the final resort, I guess, after a couple months of discussion.
The Moose is currently paying $12,000 plus a year in county taxes. All right, asking them to pay an additional tax just to become part of the town. That was a no, and it would be for me if I owned the same nonprofit. I was very surprised to find that they were paying county taxes. Now, in full disclosure, I am a member of the Moose. I'm not on the board, I'm just a member of the Moose, my husband and I have been members for years. They are a nonprofit, everything they do goes to the International Order of the Moose.
Well, thank you for that disclosure. So I will say, so we're looking at like, considering, and I understand what you're saying in terms of the numbers, but we're looking at fully five years of about $195,000.
No, 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 no.
Well, we, we're, well, let me just finish, can I finish please? So you were saying 39K a year, is that correct? Nine thousand eight hundred. Oh, nine thousand eight hundred, okay, thank you for the clarification.
For a total, for the five-year total of 49,300.
Oh, for the five, okay, okay, because I was thinking the other way, I thought you said 39, I was, that's a big number.
That's a different discussion at that point.
Yeah, that's a different discussion. Okay, so.
I just want to make sure that we're considering all these aspects because what we're doing right now is setting a precedent for future annexations and organizations that may come to us to say, hey, we want a break on our taxes for so many years. And that's something towns do all the time. But I want to be sure, thinking about all the aspects of it so that we have kind of a sense going forward. What to consider.
If this were not a nonprofit.
Right.
That would be a whole different ballgame, but this, this, this is a nonprofit entity.
Right.
And it's, you need only do a little research on the Moose to know that they do good things for people across the world. It's an international organization and it is a nonprofit. It's just got a snafu with the county and, and the fact that they do rent that one little portion of the building.
And that second whereas in the agreement identifies that they are a nonstop corporation. So I think that is kind of addressing like we're doing this because this is a nonprofit.
Right, so there would not necessarily be a precedence, we would do this for any nonprofit. We do this for the churches.
But normally for the, the churches, we don't, they don't pay county taxes, so we wouldn't go through this. In the annexation phase, there are about 10 properties that are registered nonprofits that do not pay taxes like they normally would. And so we don't, we wouldn't get tax revenue from them anyways, and we also don't need to obtain their consent because it's, it's not costing them anything else. They were notified and got the same letters as everyone else about getting annexed and some signed on. But it's more of a symbolic gesture, but just the fact that this is a very unique situation that a nonprofit has to pay county taxes because of one of their fundraising activities. And like, and like Commissioner Franklin said, it sets the precedence of it's not a regular commercial property rebating taxes, which I, I would not recommend, just because at that point, it's at the, the, the point that any commercial property could say they want to get their taxes abated and it's just hard to move forward at that point.
And I wouldn't say we should go to any, if there was another nonprofit with this situation, I wouldn't necessarily say we should be going to them with the agreement.
I said the last.
Another agreement. Because I think if this property turns out to have a lot of police calls there and they've got police there twice, three times a day, then we need to think about that. Now, I think it might still be worth doing, even if that happens, because it's only a five-year period. But it's just something we need to consider and think about in the process as we're setting how we're going to do this in the future. And I.
And the, the town does have the ability to max 10 years, waive taxes for a max of 10 years. So obviously this is only half of that. And then, so if the property sold. Yeah, we don't, that's a, but there are Moose Lovers that do offer that, which is crazy to me. For full profit parcels, but also if the property sold for any reason or the ownership of the Moose does, it, it becomes like a full commercial property or something, the, the agreement is nullified. It's between us and the Moose.
Little technical thing, which was like, all the names and addresses are here, so like, that's okay if there's changes to those people that.
Yeah, that's just too, at this point, and at this point, that's your, the registered agents of the Moose Lodge. Like I said, well, if, if the Moose Lodge sells and moves and some other full profit company moves in, the agreement is nullified and they, that new company would have to pay taxes.
Now, the other question I have is this. I'm trying. It looks like the board doesn't have to agree to this.
It's.
Signature.
Not a formal vote, it's not like legislation, but we definitely wanted to, in the, in the sake of transparency, bring it up before the board and have the, the general support of the board to move forward, which would just get recorded in the minutes as the board was in favor of moving forward, it doesn't have to be a, a formal vote or anything like that, is my understanding of it.
So just for like precedent setting and all of that. The, who, the mayor at any point, not specifically you Linda, but a mayor of the town at any point can make an agreement with a company or nonprofit so that they might not have to pay taxes for up to 10 years.
That's kind of stretching, I would say probably not, town attorney would say no. But yeah, but we can always, what we can do is put in place some, some rules of annexation. If, if this is something we want to kind of move forward bit by bit, and we can kind of set those guidelines in some sort of ordinance or something like that. That state when the criteria would be for allowing these agreements to move forward or whatever. But as it stands right now, it definitely should and to be legally valid, it would have to come before the board. Some way, shape or form.
I mean, you see the potential problems with something like, like that.
What kind of problem could there be now? I mean, seriously. Why it is before you now.
Yeah.
Do this any other way. And it's not that, I, it is not required to vote on, as Kyle said. At this point, it is not required to be a majority or even a full board vote. At this point, it is not required to be a majority or even a full board vote. But I, I don't like going forward without letting you guys know.
Right. And that's how, but um, you're here now, right? But we also want to, as we're setting precedents, we want to think about.
As I said before, this is not really as much a precedent as it would be an entity that would be tasked and we chose not to.
Yeah, I guess I'm not specifically talking about this agreement. I'm getting a little sidetracked into saying we really should have some kind of um, gutter, gutters or lanes to manage that kind of thing because you basically could have a mayor who says, oh, you know, the Discovery Channel, I'm thinking of Silver Spring, is coming in and that we're just gonna make them not pay taxes for ten years. Kyle's saying that's not exactly true, but that's, sounds like technically could happen, which would be bad, even though you're not going to do that. Do you know what I'm saying?
I maybe, I can, I can check with Attorney Best on stuff moving forward. And what we could do is set a precedent and just have a board vote now on it. Um, and because it's really not expending town funds, we're, we're technically taking a hit, but um, uh, but yeah, we're not expending town funds. That's why it's not covered under any procurement or anything like that as a contract agreement. Um, but I know for the county council, for example, they always vote to waive impact fees and whatnot um, and move that type of stuff forward. So it could be negotiated on the county exec level and economic development level, but it still has to come before the uh, the county council for, for final approval for that to be done. Um, so we could definitely set the present precedent tonight and have a board vote on it. Um, just to set this as the way to move it forward, and then we can talk to Town Attorney Best on maybe setting a set of annexation guidelines. Um, and a kind of a plan of how we, how the town annexes in the future and off, what, um, at what point can we offer these agreements? Or does the, the president have the opportunity to even offer the agreement um, to the board? The board prior to even offering it, so.
Wouldn't all such uh, things also fall under our ethics ordinance? Conflict of interest? I mean, you could have, we, we can look at that. I, I don't remember what it says, but um, I think some parts of that, you know, because what Sarah, what Commissioner Franklin's asking is, you know, not just this particular situation, but what if other things come up other than annexation where there's any kind of arrangement made with a not-for-profit or things like that?
Yes, that is, I'm, not just in a fashion, but in any situation, it seems like that can be done. Right, so.
And I can get the town attorney and get his, his opinion on it and go forward. Uh, but we did check with him on uh, um, the mayor being a member of the Moose and kind of talking to them, but he said because her and her husband not sit on the board, they're simply members of, of the organization, that there's no conflict of interest as long as. And then she obviously uh, brought it forward, brought that information forward um, herself, so.
Yeah, that would be good if you could talk to Kevin about that, cuz I think all three of us probably can see the potential for that to be concerning.
Absolutely, I agree.
Okay, Kyle, if you'll check with Kevin. And we can address this at a future time.
Did we want to table this for the town meeting or something like that? For the next town meeting, for the public vote or?
Uh, let's see what Kevin's. Let's, let's see how Kevin responds first, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. So we're tabling this particular agreement tonight.
Right.
And we can just do it at the town meeting, right? So that it's not. Is that gonna cause problems with the annexation?
Um, I know we were trying to keep it on, on the down low, just not hide it, but not prominently uh, display it just so that other uh, areas don't get the idea that we can. But I mean, we could always develop, we could, the board could pass a res- you know, um, pretty much saying that we're not going to, uh, these are the guidelines for, for doing something like this. We could pass a res- a some, a resolution like that, kind of set precedence, and then pass this um, agreement right afterwards.
Yeah, and I think most, most municipalities or gov-, you know, county governments, state governments enter into these types of agreements. Um, so most places know they can come forward to ask any things, whether they always get them or not. But I think this, I personally think this request is reasonable, given the, or awaiting feedback from chief, but i- if there's not major demands on our services, I don't think it's unreasonable.
Okay, sounds good. I'll uh, I'll do my homework. I'll work with chief to get those answers. We'll email them out before the, the meeting, so you have time to consider, and we'll include a memo in the packet as well for the February town meeting. And we'll include that as an agenda line.
Thank you.
No problem. Um, were there any other questions with annexation that I could answer this time? Pretty much once the uh, I mean, once this agreement's finalized, that gives us that one point eight million in consent. Um, and then at that point, we would only need the, the two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars um, for the, moving forward with the rest of uh, two oh two. Once we get that consent or we have our boundaries down, um, then we'd forward that over to the surveying firm, like I said, that we used for phase one. They do the boundaries and send it over to the town attorney for the uh, for the annexation um, resolution. So that's just the, the time for moving forward.
Any other questions? Okay, moving forward, the FY twenty twenty-two budget planning and proposed tax rates, that is a board discussion. At this time, uh, Will?
Good. Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. Um, so this is something uh, today that we're gonna be discussing. Um, and I know we'll probably, probably be discussing it for the next month or two as well. Um, as you know, we are come, approaching on our budgeting season as we start, start to prepare on what our FY twenty twenty-two budget will look like. Um, of course, before we get there, we have to uh, continue to watch and mir- watch our forecast that we have for the remaining, I guess, five months of this fiscal year currently right now. Um, about the last, I believe, the December town hall uh, meeting, um, I did a presentation. It might have been November. Can't really recall, I apologize, but I did a presentation that uh, showed a little bit of the forecast um, for uh, the remaining, the remaining six months of this fiscal year. Uh, and it had us ending uh, the fiscal year in June, uh, in the red, roughly about uh, uh, forty-nine thousand dollars. Um, and a good, of course, a good amount of some of our um, uh, difficulty, difficulties this year were due to COVID nineteen and a few of other things that ha- have be- uh, come in slow, uh, such as revenues like public utility taxes and whatnot. Um, I have been able, I, I was able to mail out uh, the, our two largest ones uh, this month of, in Janu- well, yeah, this month of January, I have not received all of those monies in yet, but I know that'll be roughly about three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars that'll come in uh, once we receive those checks. So that'll be a good amount. And I know that uh, January, though, i- is not finalized yet. Now, I know we're creeping up on a few, a few more days left, but we had a uh, unanticipated a large amount from uh, earned income taxes that came in, and I believe it's about ninety-six thousand dollars. So uh, those are some numbers that uh, were a little bit um, over our predicted numbers for the month of January on the revenue side. Um, but some things, as I mentioned over the past month, uh, some of us all have been talking about, uh, we need to find other areas or ways to try to uh, become net neutral at the end of the year and, and not always happen to explain why we're ending uh, the, the year financially in the red. And as you know, uh, past history has not, uh, the town has not really done uh, any uh, increases in the revenue side or decrease or decreases on the expense side, uh, has continuously to try to offer the services uh, to their residents. Um, and most certainly over the years, possibly, possibly increasing the services that has, it's once offered as well. And with that, there needs to be some areas that, again, we, we need to probably, possibly bring in, no, not prob- probably, I apologize. We need to find areas to bring in more money, more revenue. Uh, it's as simple as that. Um, and what I did here in this memo was to break out some scenarios uh, for the Board of Commissioners' considerations. Again, these are just some considerations, uh, different scenarios of increasing um, um, real property taxes within a town of Upper Marlboro. As we know, this is something that uh, has not been increased in over thirty or forty years within a town. And uh, as we look at where we sit um, within a town of, sorry, within Prince George's County, uh, we have the lowest tax rate. I know some may say that that's a good thing, uh, but some of those other municipalities that have higher tax rates than us uh, most certainly do not offer the same amount of services that we are able to provide to our constituents here. Um, so what I wanted to do here is uh, just looking at the memo, and I see Kyle has a piece of it up here, which is great for me. Thanks, Kyle. Um, uh, looking at exhibit, I'm gonna jump to exhibit three. Um, exhibit three just speaks to our current uh, tax-based assessments uh, for our non-commercial, which of course is residential, uh, which is at fifty-five million, four hundred sixty-two thousand. Uh, we have commercial there at thirty-three, uh, just over thirty-three million. Uh, we have public utility taxes at forty-seven million and uh, business personal property at seven million, seven million. Uh, this fiscal year, we had budgeted uh, to bring in six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, including all of those taxes. Um, I, we're pretty much, we are on pace to do that this year. As I mentioned, we have under budgeted some monies that we've gotten in for um, earned income taxes, so that's a great thing. Uh, but these rates, um, and most importantly, one of the ones that a lot of individuals has been uh, talking about as we've tried to increase, is the non-commercial or the residential uh, rate, uh, which currently sits at zero point two four percent. Um, what I did was I wanted to uh, paint a picture of uh, providing two scenarios. Um, and in exhibit four, the scenario shows what our end goal is. Um, our end goal is to try to bring the uh, residential tax rate to, from zero point two four percent to zero point three eight nine percent. Uh, the uh, goal is to try to bring our commercial rate from zero point five two percent to zero point six zero one percent, uh, which that's an eight percent increase. Uh, we wanted, we would like to do, what I believe we uh, should look into doing is raising the public utility taxes uh, from zero point seven five percent to one point two five percent. And also the business personal property from, raising it from zero point four five percent to zero point seven five uh, percent. Uh, all of these rates that we are increasing to, where uh, they're not at the top of the pack as we look at the uh, the rates within Prince George's County. Uh, they're roughly uh, moving us up about three or four uh, spots uh, within all of the remaining municipalities. So it doesn't put us in a middle of the pack, uh, and it's not, well, I won't say it's not an additional expense coming out of people's pockets, but this is something that has been uh, long overdue as far as uh, increasing the taxes within the town. So uh, exhibit four just shows you a, a goal or a snapshot that I believe we will need to get to uh, within um, if not FY twenty twenty, FY twenty twenty-two, then most certainly within three ye- three years. Uh, we anticipate that we need to find a way to uh, bring in an additional two hundred thousand dollars uh, of revenue in FY twenty twenty-two. Uh, what that would allow us to do is to end the year uh, net neutral. Uh, pretty much saying that what we budgeted for as expenses going out, we have the same amount of money of revenue coming in to supplement it. Uh, but what we want to do in the near future and, and hoping uh, that additional things may uh, change or in or happen um, as Kyle just previously talked about annexation, is we want to make sure that we can also uh, have a separate fund uh, for our capital improvement projects. I think we uh, right now, we're, we're, we are doing some capital improvement. I think we want to do it at a little bit, probably faster pace, and that's all across, across all spectrums of uh, doing things within the town of Upper Marlboro. I know we have the uh, uh, the playground that's underway and, and other projects as well. So we want to try to create a fund so that we can have matching monies instead of just diving into our reserve fund uh, necessarily to supplement the, to the uh, the budget right now. What exhibit five shows is a three-year snapshot. As I mentioned, exhibit four, uh, it just takes you from where we are now currently uh, to where we want to be. Uh, exhibit five is a thre- a three-year process. Um, it increases uh, all uh, forms of the taxes gradually over the next three years. Uh, so it'll get us the same rate over the next three years. Um, but in FY twenty twenty-two, it won't bring as much revenue as int- as we uh, presented in exhibit four. Uh, uh, let me go back and I apologize. Exhibit four was scheduled to bring in, or would be scheduled to bring in uh, three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, and, and that's year one. Uh, whereas if we did the three-step process, exhibit five, uh, in exhibit five, uh, that will be scheduled to bring in three hundred and four thousand dollars. Now, both of those numbers are, of course, of course, over the uh, anticipated amount to balance the budget of two hundred thousand, which is good. But again, it allows us to potentially put money into a fund for the uh, for capital improvement and/or for the reasonings of uh, all of the loss of revenue that we've had to incur uh, because of the parking meters within this uh, fiscal year right now. Uh, so that's uh, some of the things as far as the taxes. Uh, additionally, in the, in the memo, I wanted to speak about some other areas. I just, just did not want to focus on taxes. I wanted to uh, state some other areas that I believe that we may be able to uh, bring us a little bit more additional monies. Uh, the Board of Commissioners most recently uh, set a new business license rate uh, at forty-five dollars, which is about two, two hundred fifty-five dollars less than what the original rate was. I think that was a great move um, by the Board of Commissioners, and of course, because of what's going on with the pandemic. Uh, now, moving forward, I believe that the rate, which is very comparable to other municipalities who have this fee or the, and or this program, uh, sh- we should look into considering setting the rate at a hundred and fifty dollars, which is of course a hundred and five, well, well, less than what the original rate was, but a hundred and five dollars less than um, in total what that rate was as well. And one other thing that we've always uh, talked about, and I think this was a little bit of uh, where the discussion was going and had within the annexation and the, the nonprofit is uh, having more of those discussions with our nonprofits or those uh, non-taxable entities within the town of Upper Marlboro. Uh, Kyle did a, a piece back in two thousand and eighteen uh, that spoke to the s- uh, the non-taxable um, assessments here in the town of Upper Marlboro, which uh, amassed twenty, twenty-nine million um, of uh, of assessments. And that loss in revenue was roughly uh, eighty-seven thousand dollars. So uh, now that, that was in twenty eighteen. It possibly could have increased since then, but that's an area that I believe that we need to uh, try to uh, lean a little bit more heavily on with the uh, non-taxable entities within the town of Upper Marlboro and potentially seek out uh, pilot opportunities to fund specific projects, projects and/or specific funds within our town's budget. So um, that is uh, what I have to speak on as far as what the memo was presenting. Um, I've been able to uh, send this to the Board of Commissioners. And again, this is just something that uh, myself and Kyle and our accountant have been working on, and the Commissioners as well have been working on. They've all had their discussions or their comments back and forth for myself and Kyle. Um, and uh, again, I think this is something that's gonna be uh, played with or tailored with a little bit until we get to the final results at the end of the year, and I'm not sure what that will be. Uh, but I know uh, I'm just here, of course, to, to offer uh, some numbers and hopefully be able to take on some questions and be able to provide some answers. So that's all.
Could I help in real quick, Will?
Sure, Kyle.
I just want to throw uh, a bit more information in there, too. So just looking at the uh, if we do annex, um, that tax base would be an additional uh, nearly two hundred thousand dollars um, in tax revenues just from uh, property taxes alone if phase two and three goes in place. Um, and that annexation phase also brings in one-speed camera, which would go from the Prince George's County controlling it to the town of Marlboro controlling it. And we give on the opportunity to install red light cameras along uh, two oh two, seven twenty-five, right there, that dangerous intersection people keep running and hitting the auto shop. And then also the one as well. So that's some opportunities for both. One, starting to put some traffic safety um, calming devices into place, and also um, help pay for our public safety um, capital improvement, for instance, that, that could help. So those are some revenues we're looking at as well, but obviously, we're not um, factoring that in at that moment because that's the future. We don't want to, that's not set in stone yet, so we don't want to uh, count our chickens before they hatch. Um, but just looking at a quick um, budget, I know I threw something together, um, and I haven't had a chance to talk with Will at it, but pretty much if you look at example five, that we'll put together with that FY twenty-two rate, if we did that rate, increase it, um, and then we'd still be about fifty thousand dollars short of our, of our budget. Um, it would be fifty thousand in the hole, including um, capital improvement projects that we want to do. Um, but if we, obviously, if we did example four, put us in place, but if we annexed and did the uh, FY twenty twenty-two rate, um, we would be pretty set right now. That's just, just throwing out very tentative figures. I gotta meet with Will more about that um, to discuss and project the budget. That's, just wanted to put that kind of thought in the Commissioners' ear.
Um, and the last thing I'll add, um, just to give an, an idea, a rough estimate. So um, in exhibit four, again, I mentioned is the uh, the end goal, or we're. um, in exhibit four, again, I mentioned is the uh, the end goal or where we wanted to be. So uh, what I did was, uh, the way we get our well, calculate, calculate how much you're uh going to pay based off of your assessments is you take the assessment uh value of your property, you multiply that by our rating, you divide it by one hundred. So uh, for instance, if we had a two hundred thousand dollar uh property assessments, and we will multiply that by our current rate of zero point uh, well, yeah, point zero, uh, point two four, that's roughly a, a property payment or tax payment of uh two hun- or four hundred and eighty dollars. Um, if you multiplied those same numbers or the same figures with a different rate uh of the end goal of zero point three eight nine, uh, that'll be a tax payment of seven hundred seventy-eight dollars. So it's, it's two hundred and ninety-eight dollar difference. But I wanted to give you an idea of, of, an average of what that can be for a property, uh, a tax payment for a resident of a property value of two hundred or tax property assessment, sorry, of two hundred thousand dollars.
And I do think that it is uh important to understand the assessed value of the property in the town of Upper Marlboro is a whole lot different than most areas. We don't have mega mansions. Uh, we don't have that kind of uh assessed value. There are only a handful of homes that reach that threshold. I would say the average is about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. And that's throughout most of the town. That makes a big difference when you're looking at there was the smaller tax rate.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah, I, I mean, I know uh Spring Branch is about one fifty to two hundred, somewhere one seventy-five maybe, as an assessed value. And the people need to understand it is not the value you think your home will sell at. It's value that the county thinks your home is.
Yeah, I think um that because of our lower assessed value are each increase isn't really bringing in even enough to like hire a new office, police officer. So I'm concerned, um, my theme tonight is future government. I'm concerned that we need to be making sure that because we're, we should have five officers for the town. That's what we used to always have, right? And we can't, we're just trying to break with the three police staff we have. I know we're understaffed in a lot of departments. So I'm concerned about uh bringing in enough money to the government that the people expect and require.
Well, we're bringing on the third one now. Uh, we've agreed to bring on the third one in this coming year. So that still, as far as I'm concerned, makes us short, but it pleases uh several, uh, many of the people in the town who want that two shifts. Uh, where we have an evening shift, a morning and an evening shift. This has to be, uh, in my opinion, uh, and I've been listening to this thing for six years. This has to be something that we do together with annexation. If we can do it together with annexation, we can keep that first increase lower. If we can't, that increases really needs to be higher. It really depends on how we go with this because it this is probably the only year legitimate that I could actually say we need to go to the reserve. Because if ever there was a year that we needed the reserve, this is the year that it was.
Yes.
We did not plan on any of this. This is not something anybody forecasted. So I, I, I mean, if I have to, I, you know, we will, we don't have a choice, but I would rather not. So this really does need to be thought out uh long and hard. And like I said, I really do believe we truly need to do both. How much of an increase right now will depend on whether or not we annex.
Yeah, I think that thing we have to keep in mind when we're annexing is, is gonna bring in more money, but we're gonna need more service. We're gonna need more trucks, we're gonna need more police, the cars, because the next police officer is expensive to hire because we need to get all the equipment. Um, and we, the town staff frankly is understaffed as well. So I think we have to think about all of that when we're trying to set the rate and even when we're considering annexation. You know, what extra ser- or what more services should we have? What do those services cost? And you know, based on what those services, what the services we need cost, that's what we should be doing to set a rate. If that makes sense.
And we, we have to show them the increase on its own. Okay, that, that's my estimation. We have to increase enough so that we are just not surviving.
Right.
Your idea. We need to have that little extra cushion. Cushion that we were quite used to that we shouldn't have gotten. That's the cushion every once. We have to be able to do that and not just maintain what we have to be able to go forward.
Yeah.
Uh, I know that nobody wants a big increase in taxes. This is really like not the time. But uh, we don't have a whole lot of choice here. If we continue to say, okay, this is another pandemic year, which twenty twenty-one may very well turn out to be, we don't know. Uh, we're back to the reserve and we don't have that much of a reserve.
I agree.
Saying this on a regular basis. So uh, that is one of the things that we have to look at going forward. And we are at the all-time low for tax rates, and everybody thinks that's wonderful for them.
With a super low uh median assessed value.
Yeah, uh, it's great for them and I understand it, but they want things too. And you can't have it both ways. I mean, I've had this discussion with many of our uh constituents already. You know, where they'll, then why, why would you raise taxes now? And I, you want the services? If you want to continue the services? Or do we cut services and, and keep your tax rate at that lovely low rate of twenty-four cents? But we need to really bring home the fact that we haven't done it in thirty years or better.
Well, and everyone told me when I was canvassing that they wanted their roads improved. And then when I got in here, I realized there wasn't any money to do it. So we've got.
We're working on that. And, and truly, that's why I had the ask from Senator Peters was for that purpose because at our tax rate, there is no way we will ever amass that kind of money again. And I hope Senator Peters doesn't listen to this, this uh meeting because if I were Senator Peters, I would say if you don't raise your taxes, why would I give money? I mean, if your people don't want to contribute, why would I do this? I mean, that would be me, but that, yeah, hopefully he doesn't listen.
Sorry.
But I think that everyone has to understand that we've asked the, the businesses to pony up. And they have, we've raised business taxes, we've made commercial taxes, we've asked all the uh uh utilities, we've increased all of those. Everything's been increased except one area.
Which is the town's largest tax district.
So we need to.
And I think.
That, that's where they need, we need to get people to understand. They have to be as into this and buy into this whole thing just like everybody else has.
And I think um on that, this is kind of more on a practical, how do we do this note? I, I think having a plan to increase taxes on or review taxes or look at it on a regular cycle is probably important for annexing because as you bring in new people from the town, you don't want to have more people who are unaccustomed to having tax increases. But Kyle, Emily has a question that you probably can answer. But we need to make sure that people understand what the services cost and then how those are being funded. And we also need to have money for capital improvements and road paving and all of that. And a lot of that can come from parking and the red light cameras and whatnot, but we do need. I think COVID has shown us that we need to have a basic ability to continue running if those other sources of income dry up for whatever reason. Did you see Emily's question, Kyle? I know you.
Yeah, I'm doing the math. I couldn't remember what. Depending on your home value, um, so the average home value in Upper Marlboro is around two hundred thousand dollars. That's the assessed value, not what the, what it sells for. Currently, a two hundred thousand dollar home at the point two four tax rate would pay four hundred and eighty dollars in taxes. Um, and so if that went up to say a, the MAC rate that we're looking at, I think is point zero three eight. And Will, if you have the number in front of you, please shout it out.
I'm sorry, Kyle. I was reading to see what, so what are you trying to calculate right now?
Well, uh, pretty broad now, so um, so the, so a two hundred thousand dollar worth home would go from that four eighty to two hundred and uh, with seven hundred and sixty dollars, so about two hundred and change increase.
Oh, if it was off the two hundred thousand assessment? So currently.
Seven hundred sixty dollars, is that right?
It was seven seventy-eight. So currently, if it's a two hundred thousand assessment rate, uh, multiplying it by what our end goal rate will be, which is zero point three eight nine percent, it will be a property tax payment of seven hundred seventy-eight.
And the current is for, what did you say?
It would be four eighty, four eighty is current.
So that's.
It will be a two ninety-eight difference.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't.
I was gonna calculate it, but you were ahead of me.
If anyone has questions, if they just want to drop their address in the chat, um, or shoot me an email or myself, we can do that. We can look at their home assessed value and let them know uh what that exactly will be. Um, but I know just so at the, the end goal of point three, it would put us, I think, fourth. Um, it, Bowie, the city Bowie is the fifth lowest municipality tax rate. That would put us under them at number four. But I know that Capital Hype, which is the number, um, which is the current number four, is looking to raise their, their property taxes above. So we'd be actually the, the third lowest at that point. Well, under only the City College Park, which has a tax rate of point three two. But they do not field a police department because they have the University of Maryland Police Department patrols the City of College Park. Um, so that's a huge tax expense that the burden is actually on the state to patrol the City of College Park and not the, the City College Park's taxpayers, which is very unique and very beneficial to them. Um, but that's how they're able to keep their tax rate so low. Plus, they get a large amount of entertainment tax from all the games and stuff from the University of Maryland. Charge an entertainment tax. So that is a huge tax revenue for them. And that's, and they're, they're pretty much a full-service city minus the police department. Um, and that's the only reason they're able to keep the tax rates that low is because of University of Maryland. If, if it wasn't that case, they would be up there with at least Bowie at forty cents, if not much higher. But I just want to explain that special circumstance for why, who the next one up is.
Also, when we're, we're discussing this, we need to look at, like Kyle was just saying, uh, a lot of uh, the argument that I have come across is, well, so-and-so does it. We need to be as familiar with the so-and-so's. Like, you know, when, when somebody says Bowie, I, I just say, don't even go there. Fifty thousand people plus and six hundred people. Uh, you know, that it is like, let's compare apples to apples. Yeah, you know, people like to compare us to a lot of things and we're not there yet. Uh, so you have to kind of bring them down to earth.
Well, what is Bu- Bowie's assessed median assessed value has got to be more than two hundred thousand.
Oh, yes. That's on the poor side of town, maybe. But I, I, like I said, we, we we don't have, a- and, and I'm comfortable with that. We, we are a middle-class uh town. I mean, that's pretty uh comfortable middle-class uh people. The homes are not overly expensive. Uh, they don't, they turn around rather quickly on the market. But we don't have a lot of, like I said, McMansions, uh, where other municipalities do, or they have a lot more homes to deal with. We have two hundred and twenty-three, I think, is the total number. And it's not going to get any bigger unless we annex.
And just uh one more thing, as the town raises taxes and is able to provide additional services, that actually brings the county tax down um through the tax differential program. So for instance, right now, because we only have um X amount of patrol hours, we only qualify for forty percent of the, of the tax credit from the county. And so because the county sees it, since we're only patrolling for this amount and the county police have to make up the, the remainder, the county tax is actually going to be higher um by a little bit. So as the town expands its police patrol services, for instance, that you'll see that county tax rate go down as we're able to do more stuff with public works that goes down or code enforcement. So that's just um something, and as, even as we're able to help the volunteer fire department, that is another category in the tax um bracket. If we're able to give some sort of contribution to them for operational costs or buying some of their equipment, that also all goes um brings the county tax down because the county formula sees what services the town provides versus what the county has to make up. So in cities like, full-service cities like the City of Hyattsville or the City of Laurel, um, the City of Bowie, um, and the the City Greenbelt, which have full-service police departments, um, most of them have a full recreation department. Like, I know for the City of Greenbelt does not have a single park and planning facility within its borders. It's all city-owned, so they're able to recoup all that taxes that would otherwise go to the county. So that's something else that it's, it's, it's pretty minute. It may be a hundred dollars for property depending on that. But it's still something to consider and um, yeah, move forward.
So is that the homeowner has a reduced tax rate or we receive more of the tax?
The homeowners, we don't get, and it's, it's no benefit for the town technically, it's for the residents and their county tax bill.
So practically, with that difference of our, say, our median assessed house of two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, the difference between the old tax rate and the highest proposed tax rate, they would actually be still paying less in county taxes because we have a third police officer coming in.
Correct, yeah, very little. But I mean, as we, the third police officer, one thing, because we're able to get to X chief's calculator, we're able to do X amount of patrol hours. But as we bring in the, the fifth, sixth, possibly even seventh to eighth, or even once, I think, ten officers is twenty-five hundred coverage. Um, that's when we're able to collect pretty much most of that police, uh, at least the patrol services. There's other stuff like homicide investigation, stuff that we would probably not take on, that, that what, we'd leave that to the county. Um, but that, that, the patrol services is the biggest chunk out of the, the police side of things. If we do different things, if we go to the point where we're dispatching our own officers, they're not on the county dispatch channel, that's a tax credit and stuff like that. That's how the City of Bowie, College Park, um, Hyattsville, they all, or they pay less in county taxes. Except the City College Park because, because the county police um still deal with the majority of the City College Park along with the uh the um campus police. So that's, that's why the City College Park's not a good example for that tax differential, because they're, they're still pretty high because um, they don't field a police department to replace the county taxes. Yeah, but I can, uh, if anyone is more, I have a chart that the county puts every year and they do their calculations. It's, it's kind of complex and we really haven't gotten into it until the past, I'd say, two years or so is when we've really started noticing it. Um. But I can send the chart out and you can kind of see by, I mean, who provides what kind of service based off of uh their county tax rate and what they're, what they're paying. So it's pretty interesting.
I would like it. I would like to see the chart.
And I can, yeah, I'll look at Will and we'll get that sent out to the, to the Commissioners.
Now, we can uh discuss this from now until uh like eternity. I would rather not do that this evening. So, uh, we will be continuously discussing this uh for some time. Uh, I do, uh, Kyle and I have talked about putting on a, an extra work session.
Okay.
Regarding the budget because. Regarding the budget, because this is not going to be something that's going to be a walk in the park. Because this is a tough year. It was a tough year last year and it's, yeah, my crystal ball broke last year. So there's no, we, it, it's very hard for us to even, we can project and we've had difficulties with that in the past. So I'd like to be a lot more careful.
Yes.
As well, how we do this. So we, we will, if you can kind of let him know when another date, rather than, yeah, if you want to do it another Tuesday or another day works better. We do need to do another work session, an extra.
Evening.
And there's another question in the chat as well.
That would, so the new tax would take effect, depending when the, if the board passes it in a June timeframe, it would show up in your next year's tax bill. So the one that you pay in September, October, November, December, if you pay the one or you, you split it up between the two, that's when you'd see that. That change. And it would be under the town levy section of your tax bill. But the county tax always changes. I'll throw that out there too. If you go through your history of your county tax bill, it always changes, but you'd see consistently that your town tax rate stays the same. Or has stayed the same for the past 30 years unless your property gets reassessed by the town, by the, by the state, which usually does every couple of years, but it's not, the assessed value doesn't really, I, I don't know what the average change in the assessed value is, but it's, it's not a whole lot. But if you go on the county, if you pay your taxes electronically on the county website, you can go and see the different years and kind of see how that's tracked and just get an idea of, of your property's value over the year, where it could go, where it has been. So if there's any residents thinking through that, I'd, I'd encourage you just to explore that option.
Okay, and as I said, we could go on for this one till like midnight, but we do have a few other things to do. So right now, we will, this to a, again, we will be talking about it at the next town meeting. And we will also have another work session as part of this. Moving along, we have charter amendment resolution. C A R zero one dash 2021, which is a board discussion. Okay. Do we want to do this? We've gone through this before. David, you want to give us a, a read on this?
Yes, Mayor. The, I, I don't have the original amendment from me. I'll read from the slides. Charter Amendment Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, amending the charter of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland by creating the offices of Town Administrator and Chief, Chief of Police and by permitting the official use of the alternative title, title of Mayor by the President of the Board of Commissioners and making certain stylistic grammatical and non-substantive changes there too. And just to note, the notice of the public hearing, which is just the town's notice put on the website, that had to happen on the 12th. Excuse me, I thought we had the 19th.
See, on my, on what came, that it came is the 19th.
Yeah, so that's, that, that would be the night, it had to be out by the 19th according to the rules that we have to follow. So schedules has been made up. Scheduling the public hearing, you know, there has to be so many days between this and that and so many publications in a newspaper. Four consecutive weeks, all has to dive with falling between the effective date, which is 50 days after passage by the board. And there's a 40 day posting and, and date to match. So that, that's been put together and this notice that was in the actual meeting packet is a notice that went up on the website and on the front door of town hall on the 19th.
Okay, so Ed, as it states here, the public hearing on this charter amendment is Tuesday, February 9th at 6:30, which is just prior to our regular scheduled town meeting.
Correct. Now, we were told that the, the public hearing could be held right before a town meeting where it's the board's intention to pass on the same day. But we do have a month's time between the public hearings and the desired date of passage.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any questions on this? Okay, hearing none. Forward, I know we have an added agenda item, which is the extension request of the roll-off container permit for 14133 Spring Ranch Drive.
Craig, the board previously approved them for a roll-off container permit for storage. It sits in their driveway. It expired. The owner was not able to build the shed that she wanted in time to put the items into storage. So she's asking extension through March. So just a simple board approval would allow us to, to extend that permit, reissue a permit through that March 31st time. But I can take any questions from the board on that. And just for all the residents, the town requires a, a permit if a roll-off dumpster or a pod or storage unit is placed on private property for over 15 days. So most places they do require it before you put it down, but we gave a bit more leeway in the fact that if you're planning to put a dumpster down or you're moving real quick or something, that you don't have to get a permit unless it goes over that 15 days. But you do have to get a permit if you were putting it in the roadway or on a public right of way, you have to get a permit first. But we're a bit more lax and there is no fee associated with this permit. It's just so that we're aware, we don't have dumpsters sitting all over the place and stuff like that.
And this is a pod, not a dumpster.
Right.
Correct, it's a. Sitting in the driveway.
That has a different impact on neighbors.
Yeah.
I did have a question on the ordinance itself, which is ordinance doesn't say how long or did I, am I overlooking it?
How long it, it's allowed to stay there?
It doesn't say?
It, it's up to the board. Usually the, the board will issue a permit based off time. So pretty much in the application, we ask the applicant how long they need the, the unit there for. And it's up to the board to decide if that's an appropriate amount of time or if, like if they ask for five years, obviously that's something. But in this case, the person asked for, I think, three months. And so she's asked for another three months increments. But we tried to keep it a, a pretty streamlined ordinance to a lot of detail. That's why we kind of kept pretty straightforward and, and open.
Yeah, I have no questions on that. I'm totally fine with it.
I don't see any issue with it. Especially since it's, like Sarah said, it's a pod, it's not a dumpster. A dumpster would be a different, different issue. But a pod, that's just extra storage for somebody. I've considered one while I was doing some spring cleaning, just so I can get stuff out of the house for a short period of time. If there is no objection, I would say we grant the permit through, going through March.
Do, do I need to make like a motion and we vote on it or?
Is it a vote?
Yeah.
Just a consensus?
Uh, we can just do a vote just to be safe.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I agree. It, it doesn't really, it's not legislation. So, but to be safe, I think you could just have a, an obvious thing that can be noted in the minutes.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So I motion that we approve Ms. Tanya Barnes's application for an extension of her container permit until March 31st, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All aye, so noted.
Thank you.
Commissioners will appreciate that permit. And then the next thing, the commissioner's got an email earlier. The town's trying initiative regarding the vaccine. I know we have a lot of senior citizens. So we were able to pull their, their addresses from our go-to-registration database. And we took the county flyer and added an offer from the town. If someone has, I know there's a couple seniors that either don't have access to computers or not comfortable using them or something like that. We offered up the town resources to, to give town hall a call, talk to town staff, see what kind of support they need to sign up for a county vaccine. Right now, the only way they can pre-register is through an online form. And so this is just a temporary measure in place until the county gets its hotline, its COVID vaccination hotline up and running, which will hopefully kind of replace the service from the town, which they're hoping to have by the end of the month. But I know that hotline could also get easily flooded and inundated with calls from the rest of the county. So whatever support the town can offer seniors in getting signed up for a vaccine is something we want to do. I know the commissioners also that they, they're willing to volunteer their time to help people get registered. And I think we'll probably use the, the laptop from the commissioner's office, put it in the meeting room and just schedule people to come in. If they needed to, if they just need a computer and internet to do it, that's fine. If they need help, kind of guidance through using the internet and doing an online forum, we could do that too. So just hand delivering letters at people's mailboxes and the, and the little baggies, just so people are aware. And we're not, I didn't want to wait to try and mail them and get lost in mail. So that's, that's an initiative we're doing. And I can take any questions on that, but that was the, the mayor's grandchild that I kind of just moved with.
I wanted to note that the spreadsheet that you were talking about, there's on the, what are about 52 residents, registered voters, residents that are over 70.
And right now, ages 65 and up can get vaccinated, yep.
Which puts us more like 95. Because I, I looked at it too. What, what the scary part is, is when I, I said, okay, what year was it when people turned 70? And I plugged in 70 and went, oh my, that's my birth year. It wasn't supposed to happen quite that fast, but it, yes, I will be 70 this year. I will most definitely be getting, I, by the way, Janice, have you got the vaccine date yet?
Yeah, I do have one, actually.
When yours?
Uh, the 25th February.
The 25? It's to 10. And when did you say yours was, Sarah?
The 16th.
16, all right. We'll be all done by the end of the month, yes.
Sounds good. But I'll, I'll keep the commissioners posted on any feedback we get or calls in the town hall for support. We may get nothing, we may, but I'll, I'll let you.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm, I'm here most every day, so I can help anybody. Yeah, I filled it, I filled it out myself. So the pre-grad registration form. So I can help any one of them. And if I get stuck, I, I have a number of people in the county I can call. Okay. Now, the Marlboro Volunteer Fire Department funding assistance.
Yes, so I know back at the January town meeting, we had a captain come on talking about their purchase, they're purchasing a new rescue engine for the Marble Fire Department. This is their first new apparatus purchased since 2007. So over, over 10 years, around 13 years. And so they're looking at spending around just shy of $1 million on this new piece of apparatus, including the, the fire engine itself and the equipment that goes with it. Currently at their station, they have a 2007 fire truck and a 2008 fire truck. So they're both, well, one's past its lifetime, the other is, is coming up on it pretty quickly. And so back in 2007, the town did put some money in toward the, the fire department and that caused some contention. But I spoke with the president, Jeff Beavers, yesterday he called town hall and I explained to him that we're in a financial crunch right now, but we're looking to our, our future. One of the things that a lot of other municipalities pull from to fund their voluntary fire departments is their red light, speed light camera. And because that has to go toward public safety. So they'll build the, the addition, the contribution into their public safety budget. And then that can maximize the amount of, of dollars that they get out that they don't have to send to the state. That's excess. So pretty much they're just redirecting some extra funds to the volunteer fire department that would otherwise go back to the state. So I told him that's something we're looking at. It's not set in stone or anything. But then I also let him know that there's some federal grants out there that some other departments have taken advantage of. And I pointed him in the direction of a grant writers that some of the other companies have used as well. But I know we've, they've partnered with us a lot over the past couple of years. And just, yeah, somehow, just assisting them somehow. And hopefully the town gets to a financial situation where we can contribute an X amount of dollars per year, like many other municipalities do. I know some go upward of 200, City of Bowie gives their fire, volunteer fire department upward of $200,000 a year. But they also have four fire stations to protect the City of Bowie. So, but I know the City College Park is about 25 and Berwyn Heights is about 10,000. So it depends on the size of the municipality and how many fire departments you have covering. But that's something we can look into. But I just wanted to let the commissioners know, you obviously saw the email. But if, if you guys had any questions on that, we can definitely talk about now or at a future time when we're looking at the budget.
I thank you for passing on those additional resources to them though, Kyle.
Yeah, I think we should look at it when we get to budget time because they're protecting us and it should be assisting them.
And, and I'll let the mayor talk about this later. We found out the MML magazine that came out actually featured.
Can you see it? You both get a copy. If you haven't picked it up, pick it up. I was reading the downtown resilience in the age of COVID. And we don't usually get a shout out at all ever. But I was reading it and this sentence sort of popped out. It says, several Maryland municipalities serve as examples on this front, including the towns of Bel Air and Upper Marlboro, which have promoted access to state and county resources as well as their own through their municipal websites and other means. And that is our, our Kyle and the way he posts and how he posts and keeps, maintains our website. And that is a testament because not everybody does it. And I look at websites for the municipalities all the time and I wonder how they manage to do that. I have looked for an email for one of their councilmen and don't find one and go, how do they communicate with their, their people? Ours is a lot easier. It's much better than it ever, than it was prior. But this being, just being mentioned is really something, you know, because we, we wouldn't have been ever before. Our website before, I was, somebody said, I looked at your website and I went, oh, please don't tell me you looked at that because it was terrible. But since we've put it up there and Kyle is very diligent with it, as is David, and keeping it up to date and posting on Facebook and Twitter and Instagram. Those are all things that people are taking a look at now. And we're, we're very much in the top 10, so to speak. And I was very pleased to see that. I couldn't wait to call Kyle and say, Kyle, we were in MML. Even a mention is.
But the county does help a lot there. The, over the past, ever since the pandemic started, they have really helped by sending the municipalities the information to post, which has been very helpful in not having us to root through the county website or anything to post. That's been a big. That's been a big, if I can just copy paste something, that's, that goes a long way. So they are, they're helping out a lot, too, so.
But it still is a big thing for us to, you know, I was very pleased to see that. And continue, when you get the magazine, read the article, not just for that, but it's an excellent article for us, and it would serve us well to read it and a couple others in here.
What page is that on?
That's on page, that particular sentence is on page 24.
Thank you.
That is some, the magazine, and again, MML is an excellent resource as we go forward. I know, Sarah, you have questions about connotation and things of that nature. MML is an excellent resource. And I also saw today that they're going to do a June in-person conference in Ocean City. And I was like, okay. I'm assuming they all think all the elected officials will be vaccinated by them. But we'll see. So is there anything else anybody would like to discuss?
So I have a thing I want to say for us to think about, to discuss. And I've been thinking about this a lot, and it kind of coheased in my head today when we got the news about the county. Because one of the things that during that Meet the Candidate Forum, everyone wanted to know how we were going to improve our relationship with the county. So I'm going to say my thing.
Okay, say it, and then I'll say mine.
Okay. So I think that we're really underestimating how damaging the Olm's lawsuit is to our relationship with the county. So I realize that the school building is really important to many people in town, just like the original Frederick Douglass High School, which was once located where the county daycare center is, was important to many people who are both in-town and people who are actively and intentionally excluded from town. I think that we're not really considering the very real personal trauma that's brought to residents from the town and county when we talk about the historic value of the Olm's building. Our town's history, and its full history, is a history of using, abusing, and excluding others. So when someone from our town says history or historic value, especially when that person is white, it hurts people, particularly because we haven't been honest about the history, and we've glossed over the parts that make white people uncomfortable. I think that we, as a board and the town, have to ask ourselves a question of what's most important to us moving forward. Is it a building, or is it building relationships? Do we care about the bricks, or do we care about people? And so I think we have to consider whether the building itself is something we want to keep fighting with the county over if we really want to build a relationship with them. And I think that talking to Greenwell about this, I mean, I know we need to talk about it as a board, but seeing if they think this can make any difference, I do think the town has done so much in its long history that's hurt, and we might need to be the ones sacrificing something to show that we are really committed to moving forward.
Okay. As far as the relationship with the county, we could give them that building, tell them to tear it down. Even give them the money to build the school that they want. It would not change. The county does not want a relationship.
But why?
If, if the bridge, the bridge situation doesn't tell you that, I don't know, but will. We've been, we've been working on that. Now, look at the, look at just the bridge issue, okay? Now, I know where you're going with the school, okay? But let's look at other things beside the school. Okay, what I feel that we are doing and with the school is not so much, we don't want the historic aspect of the building taken from the building, because they'll tear it down. It's so much that it's the way they, it's the way they went about doing it that we are objecting to. The county does not have a check and balance system. The county checks the county. It's like me saying, I want to do this, and I'm going to do this, and I'll vote, we'll all vote and do it. And then when it comes time for somebody to object, and they say, okay, well, we'll sit down with the police department, and we're going to, and we'll say, we want to hire a police, you know, six new police officers, and it's going to cost us a lot of money, but, and we really can't afford it, but what do you think, chief? And he says, yeah, I think we should do that, too. So now, we now have two places that say yes, and neither one of them are right. And you, you can't, the county has, county will do what the county wants to do until they're challenged. Okay, we challenged them on the parking. Okay, they weren't too pleased with us then either. But they aren't going, you can go and make as many inroads as you want. In 2016, when I first started, the first visit I made was to be Tigler's office, and she was the county liaison for the municipalities. She was the first person I wanted to get to know, because I knew I needed to know her. Okay, I went and, you know, Mel Franklin was our, our councilman. And when they were wanting to go to the move, everybody was moving the county out to Largo, moving the county out to Largo, and I said, you know, can you, you know, can you, what can you do to stop that? We can't let this happen. And he says, oh, don't worry, you know, don't worry, I got this covered. I got this covered. Then he looked me dead in the eye and said, he did not, I said, when they voted to move the, move the county offices to Largo, he says, I got outvoted. He said, I really tried. I got outvoted. Well, I looked up the vote count. It was unanimous. How much outvoted can you get? So he planned out live. He didn't try. He didn't care whether the town of Upper Marlboro suffered.
Well, and I think my, my point and what I was trying to say is that the town of Upper Marlboro has a history of not caring if black people suffer.
Okay, now, okay, I'll go with you here with this on that, Sarah. Who is suffering at the moment?
We need to.
Explain to me how, because I sit here, I don't see anybody at the door. I don't get anybody to give me a call and say, hey, this doesn't seem right to me. I feel uncomfortable, you know. I'm here every day. I'm out and about all day long. I have knocked on more doors in this town and been, and listened to numerous people, but nobody ever says that.
But I think there's a history of asking people to be silent, and so it's more than just saying, I'm available to talk.
How can you say asking them to be silent?
Well, the town, the town was segregated. There were whites-only spaces. The pool was filled in when it had to be desegregated. The school we're talking about was segregated.
Yes, and all the schools.
There are many of the people that we.
Across the country were segregated.
Yes, many of the people that we hold up in this town were enslavers. So while we want, as white people, we think, oh, I just, let's just not talk about that because it's uncomfortable, and we wish we hadn't done it. But that really actively hurts people by not acknowledging their trauma and pain. And that, there are people who live in this town who weren't allowed to walk on the sidewalk. They weren't allowed to use our facilities. And they need to have more than just like, well, I'm available to you now. They need to know that not just are we available now, but we really are here. We really care, and we really want them to be.
Okay, now, if we give up this building, is everybody going to be happy? Is all this going to go away?
I'm asking for it to be a conversation.
I never said we couldn't have a conversation, Sarah, but what I'm saying is, I need an endgame.
So I think the endgame is.
Is this going to take me to that place?
So I guess you're saying you want people to come talk to you about it, and I'm trying to talk to you about it.
I know, and I'm trying to hear you, but I don't, what I'm saying is, you're not, what you're saying, everybody's hurting, then explain to me, explain it to me in a different, I guess because it's coming from you, a white person, does not resonate as much as it would.
Well, so I, I don't want it. So I'm trying to talk about it, and the way you're talking to me right now probably makes a black person who is watching this exchange feel less inclined to feel like you're a safe person to talk to, because you're, I think you're feeling defensive, and you seem like.
It's not defensive, for heaven's sake, Sarah. We have started this conversation for the last several weeks, okay? I have said, bring up what you want to bring up, bring it to the table, but don't just bring that. Bring the solution. Bring something that we can change, that we can do.
Yes.
Maybe elementary school is your best bet.
Acknowledging this past and, and really opening up to discuss and be flexible on the elementary school, because, you know, what did we do when Frederick Douglass High School, you know, did we take care of it? Did we maintain it? Did we make sure it didn't get torn down? Because it was very historic building, and we didn't. And you can't always, you can't ever erase the sins of the past, but you can't ask people to forget that they're there, because.
No, you can't, but you can't always. There comes a point in time where you can't move forward because you're always looking back.
And yet, you can't move forward if you don't acknowledge people's past and move.
I don't think the town has not, not acknowledged it. Now, if you were at the last historical committee meeting, which was last Sunday.
Which is the first time I've, I've really seen some real black history coming out of the historic committee.
Right.
So that's.
It's not like we're ignoring it, okay? And it has taken.
But it has been.
No, it hasn't, because up until then, okay, when we finally, when Evelyn got on the board, okay, the historical committee was primarily all white people.
Yes.
Black people are historically not going to talk to white people. I mean, they don't open up. I know this. I went to the county. I went to the county's black history department and said, we need some assistance. We want the black history from the town, but we, we know that we can't get it. Can you help us? We were not sitting silently on our hands going, oh, look at all, all the wonderful things we were doing. That's not what we were doing, Sarah, and that's kind of what you indicate we were, that because we didn't get what you thought we should have.
So I think one of the things about that is, so sometimes you, you have to put in the work, especially when you're talking about a town, you know, that, the foundation is the tobacco industry, which means enslavement. And so taking black people's labor for free. And then you go to the county and you say, for free, can you help us get this history? Because we don't know what to do. And I think a lot of it is, you're saying that black people won't talk to white people, which I find to be not true. Yes, some people are so hurt that, that, you know, it's too frightening, because there's legitimate reasons to feel like people aren't going to listen to you. But if you're a person who can really stop and listen, I think it's a different story, especially if you're willing to put in some serious work first. And I think that in our approach with the county, we have to put in some serious work. We have to acknowledge things, and we have to be willing to make sacrifices, because we have to atone for our past sins.
We'll leave it right there. We'll leave it right there. Okay. As I've said, anytime anybody wants to chat, I'm here. I'll come to you. My phone number is all over this town. Everybody should have it by now. And it's my cell, so I will always answer. Moving on, if there are no other items, it is now 9:07. If there's nothing else, I'd like to adjourn. Anyone? Okay. I move we adjourn. Everyone, have a good evening. And hopefully, we will get forward. So, good evening.
Good night.